I want to get into the show.
To make sure I didn't go in right in the box by them, do my like, yeah, just making sure.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, the time being six thirty PM, I'd like to call this meeting to order. For a call?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Kettering.
Here.
And Mayor Barrios.
Here, please note, all four of us are here this evening, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation provided by Kent Roberts of the River Christian Community.
Aye.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please join with me as we pray? Our Father in Heaven, holy is your name. Thank you for the blessing that is ours in coming to you in prayer, knowing that you love us, care about us, and that you hear us as we seek your will for our lives. This evening, in this place, we ask that you would give our city leaders wisdom, discernment, objectivity, and the heart to determine and do what is right, as they seek to provide the opportunities and to meet the needs of the people who make up this community we call Oakdale. We ask as well for your blessing and provision for Chief Jason Grogan as he assumes the role and responsibilities as our Chief of Police. In this present season of our nation's fomenting discord, a discord that has led to the assassination of a young man whose life has had a valuable impact in the lives of millions of our young people. We ask that you would guard and protect the hearts and minds of these young men and women, for they are the future of our nation. We ask that you would strengthen our hearts so that we might stand against the temptations to do wrong, that you might deliver us from evil. As we continue in prayer, I think it would be fitting for us just to recognize, in a moment of silence, Charlie Kirk and his family. We thank you for being our God in whom we trust. We pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Kent. All right. Item five point one. Jerry, is this you?
Yes, this is me.
Awesome.
Before we get started, I want to thank all of our law enforcement partners and fire for being here, I hope I don't miss any, but we have a large contingent of Modesto PD, Modesto Police Department, where Jason served for twenty-eight years, FBI is here, Modesto Fire, Series Police Chief, and a couple lieutenants, Turlock Police Chief. We also have a previous, Oakdale Police Chief Lester Jenkins is here. I think I forgot everybody, if I haven't, I do apologize, but, oh, I almost missed the DA's office, Terry Sees, Chief of Investigators there, so, everyone, thank you for being here, this is an important moment for not only Oakdale, Oakdale Police Department, but Jason's family too, so, also, thank you for being here, it means a lot to us, so. So, good evening Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the community, it's my honor to introduce our new Chief of Police, Jason Grogan. Chief Grogan brings with him more than twenty-eight years of law enforcement experience, primarily with the Modesto Police Department, where he served with distinction in a wide range of roles, officer, detective, sergeant, lieutenant, and ultimately as a captain overseeing the operations division with more than one hundred and fifty personnel under his leadership. He is a graduate of the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute, a program that has prepared him to lead with vision, integrity, and accountability. He also holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the California State University Stanislaus, he possesses a post-basic, intermediate, advanced supervisor and management certifications. Since stepping in as the interim Chief Police earlier this year, Chief Grogan has provided steady leadership, guided the department through modern day challenges, and continued the culture shift towards professionalism, community-based policing, and innovation that is central to Oakdale's values. Chief Grogan has demonstrated the knowledge, experience, and dedication required to lead the Oakdale Police Department in the future, ensuring it remains professional, progressive, community-focused, and committed to the highest standards of public safety. At this point, I want to invite Chief Grogan up so I can administer the oath of office. Okay, repeat after me, aye, state your name.
Aye, Jason Grogan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any, without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties with, upon, about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I'd like Jason to inform us who is here to support him, and then I understand that his wonderful wife, my children's schoolteacher at one time, is going to pin his badge, after he introduces his family and who's with them, she will pin his badge.
Wonderful.
So, tonight, I'm blessed to have almost all of my family with me, my wife Colleen, my daughter Erin, my sister Julie, parents Bill and Marty Grogan, my dad is a retired sergeant, Modesto Police Department, my mother-in-law Debbie, her husband TJ, my sister-in-law Jennifer, and Ty, and some dear family friends behind, and then, man, I see so many colleagues around the room, I am just, I'm really overwhelmed tonight, this is, I'm blessed, thank you, I appreciate it.
Oh, that's, that's a good one, I like it, I like it.
Chief, can I ask a quick question, did one of your daughters get engaged recently?
My daughter got engaged two weeks ago.
Congratulations.
So, at, at this time, I have, I have one more request, but after this request is fulfilled, what we'll do is, I know that the law enforcement contingent that is here probably wants some pictures with you, so, what we'll do is, we'll have you go out with them, take the pictures, take your time, we're going to continue with the City Council meeting, but as I mentioned, we have a previous police chief here, I think it would be appropriate for us to get a picture with you and the Chief Police and me, the prior Chief of Police. Yes, so, we'll do the, we'll do the picture right here, we'll have our staff take it, and then feel free to take as much time outside with your family and the law enforcement, law enforcement contingent that's here, okay?
I'd like to say a few words, if you don't mind, oh, you would like to say, would you like to go first?
I just want to say, Chief Grogan, National Night Out was a few weeks ago, and Chief Grogan was stuck with Councilmember Gilbert and me in his car for two hours, and, what a nice guy, I gotta tell you, people respect you, you always walked up with a big old grin on your face, people in the community just loved your interaction, you drive like a bat out of hell, but, that's, but that's not my point.
She says I can.
My point is, you're, you, you seem to be a really great guy, and the officers in our town respect you, they admire you, and we are lucky to have you onboard.
Thank you, thank you for kind words.
I had the pleasure of riding with you on National Night Out, and I can see that you're community-driven, and you have set yourself up in Oakdale, and you're ready to serve your community, and I have high respect for you after being able to drive with you, and also, your daughter was getting engaged that night and did not know, so we were cheering you on, and you didn't even know, so, congratulations, and your place is here in Oakdale.
Just, just so everybody knows, during National Night Out, that evening, every few minutes, his phone would go off, and we'd go, was that it? Was that, was that the call? No, that wasn't it, we were on pins and needles the whole night.
Congratulations Chief, you did better than I did reciting the oath when I got sworn in as Chief several years ago, so, being retired and then coming out of retirement to take on a position like that takes something, takes heart, it takes commitment, I've chosen once I retired five years ago as Chief that I didn't want it anymore, but after talking to you, it's clear you want it, you want what's best for Oakdale, you want what's best for the city, you want what's best for the officers in this community, and I thank you, congratulations.
Man, I guess I should have started talking first, because it was like we all were going to say the same thing, but when I first read, well, I knew about this, of course, obviously, interim, and then I saw on Facebook, right, all the comments, and there were some people that I know pretty well, well, okay, what do you know, how do you know, not one person said anything negative, if anything, it was overly, overly positive, and I know some of the teammates back there with Modesto MPD, and they all praise you, all of them that I have spoken with, and that's a big deal, haven't heard one ill word about you, so all I can do is tell you, thank you for choosing Oakdale, thank you for being the personable guy you are, you're family man, when I met your wife at the last event we went to, you came right up and introduced her, I just want to say thank you, and we look forward to many years having you here, congratulations. All right, Jerry, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We'll be pulling eleven point one for a future presentation.
Eleven point one will be pulled, eleven point one, okay, wonderful. Okay, now's the time for public comment, anyone wishing to provide public comment, you will have for something that's not on the agenda, you have three minutes, come up to the mic and state your name, this is for public comment. Step right up, good evening.
Good evening, I'm short. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, Lester Jenkins, obviously, you guys know who he is.
Yes, yes.
Diana Garcia with Oakdale Sunrise Rotary, and we're here to talk about spoke, our, sorry, that was yours, SOCtober, which is our annual SOC drive, I've been doing it here with the City of Oakdale for the last five years, our goal this year is Our goal this year is to collect 3,000 pairs of new socks and donate them back into our community. We have a couple new places that we're going to donate this year. Last year, we got about 2,800 pairs of socks.
Wow.
And they were donated to Love Stanislaus County Senior Care Kits, the Oakdale Rescue Mission, the Promotoras here in Oakdale, Center for Human Services, and the Without Permission Human Trafficking Care Kits. This year, we've added the Oakdale Nursing and Rehabilitation Center, the needs out there, so they've reached out for some donations, Modesto Gospel Mission, and possibly some others. So, we need your guys' help. I have a flyer, I can leave it with Colleen. If there is a business that wants to set up a collection bin, there is a flyer that I can give them, they can post it on their window, and the whole month of October, we're collecting new socks.
Wonderful. Thank you.
When you say "we," where are the most convenient?
So, right now, we have collection bin locations at the Chamber of Commerce, Pacmail, Cosina Michoacana, One Oak Health Club, Oak Valley Hospital is going to have a donation bin as well, and Fair Oaks Elementary, Oakdale Junior High, and Oakdale Charter. Those are our locations for now.
Is your daughter going to be involved?
She is. She's at the high school now, so it's a little harder. Last year, just her efforts alone at the junior high, they collected over 800 pairs of socks.
Beautiful.
She's going to try to push that a little bit more at the high school.
Excellent.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Madam Mayor. Another three minutes right here?
City Council, my name is Julio A. Halak, 100423 Carmel Court, here in Oakdale. I am the chairman for a bicycle event that takes place every year by the name of Spok to Bear Fast. You ride bicycles, you eat, and you drink a lot of beer within the perimeters where we do it. We've been very successful with this bicycle event, 11 miles, 38 miles, and 58 miles. Within the community, the money that is raised, we give it back to nonprofits, so we are looking forward for the support, and I hear the good news that our own mayor is going to be leading the 11-mile bicycle event. So, we're waiting for you.
I'll be there.
The other thing is, I want to give thanks to City Manager Jerry and Jeff Gravel as well for your support. I'm the one behind building and fixing up the tile wall at the park. Okay? I appreciate the opportunity given to me to be creative and save it from demolition. I'm right now working, trying to piece hundreds of pieces of tile together, so I look forward, hopefully before Christmas it will be all done. Any questions?
It looks beautiful. Thank you for taking the time to put into that. I love it.
And I'm proletarian as well, so.
It's quite the jigsaw puzzle that you're putting back together, so.
Pardon me?
It's quite the jigsaw puzzle that you're putting back together, so.
Thank you.
And all the super glue you must be using, right?
My background is I've been a concrete contractor for 35 years, so I think I learned how to do a few things well. But thank you all for your help.
We're lucky.
Great job, Julio. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
I would just like to add something to that. So, when the wall was crashed into, you know, the community said, "Hey, please do everything you can." And, you know, we, obviously, we wanted to save it, but we didn't have a vision, and Julio's vision for saving this wall is phenomenal. It's not in the original state just because it can't be, but his vision of it, it's absolutely beautiful from something that was destroyed, so he deserves a lot of credit, and the community should be showing you some credit for what you did. I really appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you for your help and support.
Yep. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Julio.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else for public comment? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Linda King. I'm here representing the Oakdale Garden Club today.
I'm sorry, Linda, before you start, hey, Councilmember Gilbert, would you like to buy-
Stop my time, please. Reclaiming my time, reclaiming my time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Would you like to buy a book to the Garden Club tour?
Wait, that's my spiel.
That's her line.
You know, he's a member of the Garden Club, and so he's just kind of incorrigible.
He's a joker too, so sometimes we gotta let him have his time, you know?
Yeah, I know. Anyway, so we have our annual tour coming up on October 4th, and I do have tickets if anyone is interested. Is anybody in the audience? They're $25. I just want to shout out to you, Mayor Cher, that you've always been very, very supportive of the Oakdale Garden Club, and we really appreciate it. And also, a big shout out to Jeff Gravel, who keeps the water running on all of our downtown pots. We do the downtown pots, as many of you know. We really strongly believe in giving back to the community, so we do the downtown pots, which help out, make our downtown look beautiful. We also maintain all the plants around the cowboy statue to honor our cowboy heritage. We do a peace officer memorial garden up in Burchell Hill that honors a fallen Oakdale police officer, so we maintain that. That's with native plants. The Veterans Memorial at Fish Park, we honor our veterans by maintaining the gardens, the plantings around the memorial there. We have a native plant garden and a Blue Star Memorial at the post office. We are only a club of about 60 people, so we're very, very, very active, and we really do believe in giving back to the community. And last but not least, we have our community garden over by the senior center where we rent out plots. Seniors get first priority, but we rent out plots to members of the community so they can grow their own healthy vegetables, and we also have a bunch of fruit trees that we donate. Gardeners can have it, and then if we have extra, we donate to some of the community-sharing sites. So, again, this is our big fundraiser, our garden tour. It's October 4th, 10 to 2. We have five gardens in the city of Oakdale that we feature. Tickets are $25, and if you don't buy them from me tonight, you can get them at the shop down on Third, Ace Hardware, and Touch of Flowers. So, any questions, comments?
I have a comment, because you gave a shout out to a whole bunch of people, and I need to give a shout out to you, because I've been a Garden Club member for several years, and you are always, always, always on the go, on the run, coordinating things, putting things together. You were president for the Garden Club when I first joined, so you are a driving force behind the success of the Garden Club.
Thank you, Christopher.
And I appreciate you for that. She's coordinated this garden tour. You are the liaison between the city.
Yeah, this is the sixth year we've done this.
Yeah.
And it's now starting to be, people don't say, "Oakdale has a Garden Club?" Now they're starting to understand that, yes, Oakdale does have a Garden Club.
All of those beautiful pots that we see because of you and the Garden Club, so I'm giving you a shout out.
Well, thank you. Well, it is definitely a community, it's an all-club effort, and it's a community effort. And again, huge shout out to Jeff, because we call, he can run, but he can't hide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned the Peace Officer Memorial in Burchell Hill. Is that Paul Cocke Catonics?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for doing that.
Yes, we found out, may I?
You speaking to the mic, Linda, please?
Yes, that is him. We, I was actually walking my dog up there one day, and I saw this kind of lonely oak tree with a plaque, and I thought, "What is this?" And it looks really ugly, and it says something about the Oakdale Garden Club, and I thought, "I don't want to be, I don't want that, our name to be on this." So, I did the little digging around, and I found out the backstory, and so we decided, as a Love Oakdale project, we did a big, huge native plant garden up there. And so, it looks really nice. We maintain it, we replace plants, prune, all that kind of stuff. And again, the city was instrumental in helping us pull that together.
Thank you for doing that. Paul, why don't you die?
Yeah, the backstory was really amazing. Any other questions?
Thank you for that, Linda. Appreciate it.
Linda King, everybody. Thank you.
All right, anyone? Hi, how are you?
Good evening, Oakdale City Council and residents. My name is Justin Farkas. I'm a resident of Oakdale and vice-chairman of the Stanislaus Young Republicans. Originally, I came to press an issue regarding the atrocious statement made on Friday by the Stanislaus Democrat Party in regard to a candlelight vigil held at CSU Stanislaus that same evening. A member of this council, Christopher Smith, has donated to this organization and received their endorsement in 2022. I believe it was important for him to be made aware of this statement and to disavow their divisive rhetoric. However, my research, from my research on Mr. Smith, I came across some statements he has reshared on a number of social media platforms, most egregiously on X. Using the name @Cheetoman, Mr. Smith has propagated vile and disturbing remarks regarding Mr. Kirk's murder, and I think it is in the best interest of this community to understand the rhetoric he shares online. According to the right, it is okay for Trump and his minions to act like Nazis and fascists, but his hate speech and incitement to violence to call them Nazis and fascists. If Trump dies, we're all having parties and parades for days. Netanyahu, even better. Putin, national holiday. Stop this red debt, respect and death BS. Some of y'all would mourn Hitler, and it shows. A white supremacist was shot today. Charlie Kirk isn't a martyr, he's a casualty of the violence he incited. Charlie Kirk has arrived in hell. If you're sick of hearing about Charlie Kirk, we should be friends. Let's make one thing clear from the start. Charlie Kirk was the victim of a shooting in a country where he, along with other right-wing extremist influencers, influencers have been inciting violence for years. Kirk is neither a martyr nor a hero, he is a cause. On Blue Sky, using the same name, Smith refers to Oakdale as an annoyingly red little Central California town. Last month, he reshared there, "Don't be afraid to call things by what they are. MAGA is a terrorist organization. ICE is a secret police force conducting ethnic cleansing. Elon Musk is an oligarch, and Trump is a foreign-backed coup d'état figurehead. I moved to this city because of the values the people here hold. If you are this bothered, Mr. Smith, by the place you live, the people you represent, and the individuals we find inspiring, then your time to resign is now. It is time for this city to step up and say, 'We don't condone this type of disgusting behavior from our representation.'"
Anyone else for public comment? Public comment is now closed. All right, City Council consent agenda. Any council member have an item they want to pull to discuss? If not, this is an action item. Thank you, Julio. Bye, guys.
There's a couple things on the consent agenda I'd like to point out. Number 9.4, Community Development Block Grant, it didn't just show up. Somebody seeked that out and saved this city $160,000. So, if that was you and your department, Jeff, thank you for doing that. That needs to be pointed out, so it's not just passed over. And are you going to talk about the Veterans Day Parade?
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Veterans Day Parade. So, Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony, this is our eighth year doing it. Patrick Mondragon, myself, Jason Dillon, and Lisa Lucero Ballard. So, we're going to have the event. Lineup will be at 9 o'clock at the FES Hall parking lot, like it has been the past years. Parade will start at 10 o'clock, and it'll go from the FES Hall on Lee Avenue to Pontiac to Fish Park, like Linda said, that they, the garden upkeeps. Then we will have a ceremony and a lunch, so we invite not only veterans, families, friends, everyone, everyone in the community is welcome to join us. And if you don't have a float or don't feel like walking, you can join me, you can join us on the city council float, and a float with my family and our families, so we would really love to have you there. So, that's what I have to say.
And finally, since my name was brought up, I didn't type those words out, I shared what were probably tens of thousands of different posts. I've shared a few of them, and I don't regret it. I don't take those words back, because a lot of that's, a lot of that is accurate. It's extremely accurate. All right? Thank you.
Okay, so anyone else have an item they want to pull to discuss? Not, it's an action item?
I'll move you, oh, go ahead. I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I, sorry. First and a second, roll call, please. Councilmember Katerine.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios. Yes, this item passes 4-0. Thank you, Colleen. Hi, Kathy. Hi, John. All right, no public hearings this evening, so on that, 11.1 has, we pulled it, so we are on 11.2. Good evening. She's back. I love it. All right. How are you?
Good. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. My item is the Fish Park restroom installation.
Oh, that's beautiful.
We're not going to make it by November 11.
Come on. You knew what I was thinking, right? I was hoping that this-
Next year, so.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So, for this item, there's a consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Public Restroom Company for the installation of a public restroom at Fish Park in the amount of $259,637, and a 10% contingency in the amount of $25,963 for a total project budget of $285,600 to be funded by the Parks Capital Facility Fund 343, Capital Project 2605. So, a little bit of background, SB Builders LLC, who are the developers of Saddlewood Subdivision located off of Crane Road, were to install several improvements to Fish Park as part of their conditions of approval. Due to long lead times, the city instead asked SB Builders LLC to prepay a portion of the Parks and Recreation CFFs, so the fees that they would have been paying as they pulled building permits anyways, so the city could get started on the improvements without holding the developer up on obtaining occupancy on homes. The proposed restroom facility would be a prefabricated structure designed and manufactured by Public Restroom Company. The structure includes a concrete foundation and will be delivered to the site for installation. Procurement of this building will be completed through Sourcewell Contract Number 08172PRM, a cooperative purchasing agreement available to government entities across the United States. This contract allows municipalities to acquire goods and services that have been competitively bid and vetted, ensuring full compliance with public contracting requirements. So, this new facility will be approximately 172 square feet and will feature two individual unisex ADA accessible restrooms. Each restroom will include a baby-changing station, stainless steel fixtures, hand dryers, epoxy flooring, and automatic programmable door locks. There will also be a water bottle refilling station. A central utility chase will house the electrical panel, plumbing, and mechanical systems, providing secure and efficient access for maintenance. To maintain consistency across city parks, the new restroom will match the color scheme and design features of existing facilities at both Dorata Park and Gregor Sports Park. The building components will be backed by a five-year manufacturer warranty as well as a 20-year structural warranty, ensuring long-term durability and value. So, this is kind of a bird's eye view of the north part of Fish Park, so you can see we're planning on locating the restroom just north of where the picnic tables are now. So, there's just empty grass right now, so this is just what it looks like currently. This is just a mock-up of what it'll look like with the restroom there. Anywhere you see grass in front of the restroom, that's going to be filled in with concrete, so it's very easily wheelchair-accessible. There's not going to be any sort of like step to get to it, it'll just be smooth right up to the restroom. So, these are the schematics of the restroom, exactly similar to the ones at Gregor Park and Dorata Park that have already been approved. The only difference between those and this one is we have included the bottle refill station that you see right there in the middle of the front, so that people who are playing at the park or playing tennis, they can go over and they can refill their water bottles. There will be no impact on the general fund. This project will be funded by the Parks Capital Facility Fund 343 in the amount of $285,600 and is a currently budgeted project, Capital Project 2605. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Public Restroom Company in the amount of $259,637 for the Fish Park restroom installation project, and authorize a 10% contingency in the amount of $25,963 for a total project budget of $285,600 to be funded by the Parks Capital Facility Fund 343, Capital Project 2605. Any questions?
I am so excited to hear this and see this.
Yeah, we're pretty excited.
Yeah. It's been a long time coming.
There is about a year lead time, unfortunately.
I was thinking November 10th would be a good day.
I wish.
But this is big for our community, specifically from what I know, the baseball kids, baseball parents, the soccer parents, soccer moms, and just all those people around that area. This is huge.
Yeah. We're pretty excited that we finally get to start it.
Yes, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Plumbing and electrical has to be run to this pad, because there are no inlet-outlet now?
Correct. So, that's part of what the contingency will cover, is staff will actually be running the plumbing, so water, sewer lines. We do need to pull a new line for the electrical, because stuff's tapped out at the tennis courts already, so we'll have a new line run for the electrical for it. So, that's all part of the contingency portion of it. Staff itself is going to cover that work.
Still coming out of this Parks budget.
Correct, yeah.
Wonderful.
When you are a parent and you're going to a park and your child needs to use the restroom- When you are a parent and you're going to a park and your child needs to use the restroom, it's right then and there, or there's an accident. So, thank you so much for your hard work that has gone into this.
And if, uh, if, uh, the people watching or hearing haven't visited Fish Park yet, it's got one of the best playgrounds.
It is, it's a really cool part. I brought my son. I live in Escalon, as I've said before, but we've come all the way to Oakdale and have recommended some of our friends, um, to check it out, because it is a really cool part.
Pickleball, we've got basketball, we've got this zip line.
Zip line, yeah.
And, uh, yeah, now we're going to have restrooms finally. Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a real quick question. Normally, I ask all my questions before. Who, does this company put in the concrete slab, or is that something the city does?
The concrete slab itself is already connected to the restroom, so it comes ready to set. The only concrete work we'll be doing is any of the extra, like, around it, um, to meet up with our walkway that's already there.
Perfect, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Alright, this is an action item.
Jeff, and I leave it to approve 11.2 tonight.
I second that motion.
First and a second, roll call please. Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios? Yep, this item passes 4-0, thank you. Nice job. Yes.
Before we move on to the next item, I just want to give an update. It looks like our Gilbert Park restroom will be delivered March 16th.
Beautiful. Yay, look at that.
Is it because your last name is Gilbert?
Um, ignore him, clearly. That restroom has not been active for like three years now, and children deserve a clean restroom to you, so thank you to our city.
We're going to demolish that one. It's not repairable, so we're just going to take it down.
Well, the pickleball players appreciate that at Gilbert Park, because I've heard over and over the times I've been in Gilbert Park, when's the restroom coming in? So, at least I can provide them that update.
I got a loader if you need me to help you.
We'll try to take it down sooner than later, how about that?
Thank you. Good news, good news. Alright, um, so we are going to go on with item, um, 11.3. Good evening.
Good evening. Alright, so I'll be, uh, presenting 11.3 Airport, um, Modular Home, uh, demolition. Alright, so... Uh, is a consideration of a resolution awarding a contract to Flores Excavation and Demolition, uh, Inc. for the demolition of a city-owned modular home located at the Oakdale Municipal Airport in, uh, in the amount of $8,516 to be funded by the Airport Capital Replacement Fund, uh, 657. Uh, the Oakdale Airport has had the modular home on the property for many years, many of which the airport caretaker has occupied. Uh, the home is no longer habitable. The airport caretaker has been relocated, relocated to the city-owned property at 9867, uh, Jackson Road, uh, and will, uh, continue to provide his services to the airport. Now that his home is no longer occupied, it, uh, needs to be demolished so Helius, um, the, uh, lesser, lesser of, uh, Hanger L2 and L4 can construct pilots' quarters subject to city review at a, uh, later time. Uh, the existing modular home has fallen to significant disrepair and is no longer serves the median, uh, meaningful purpose to the city. Uh, it's positioned at the main entrance of the airport and, uh, is, it's deteriorated, uh, condition creates, uh, a poor first impression and detracts from the overall image of the airport grounds. In recognition of the airport's importance as a gateway to the community, we plan to remove the outdated structure and replace it with a new, modern facility that will serve as the dedicated pilots' quarters. This, uh, will enhance both the appearance and functionality of the airport while providing valuable amenity for Helius's pilots. So, this is the, um, location of, in the, um, location of the, uh, trailer and what it looks like from the entrance of the airport. Um, we requested, um, three, uh, quotes from three different contractors, and a little better, uh, for the project was Flores Excavation and Demo, and the amount of $8,516. Um, the fiscal impact of this project is $8,516 and will be funded by the Aviation Fund 657. Uh, staff recommends that the city, uh, City Council adopt the resolution awarding a contract with Flores Excavation and Demo for the, uh, demolition of the city-owned, uh, modular home located at the Oakdale Municipal Airport in the amount of $8,516 funded by the Aviation Fund 657. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
Is Helius planning on taking over that pad?
The, where are they at? Technically, their leases are, they've been leasing that land for a few years now.
They've been leasing the land under the trailer?
Underneath the trailer, yeah. And they've just been allowing the caretaker to live there.
That's been nice of them.
It's nice we were able to move him to the Jackson Road. He's a very nice man.
Yes, he is.
Very nice man.
Mm-hmm.
And no other questions?
I just want to say, as I was glad to see a company from Oakdale. Um, finally, when I see a lot of the bids come in, some of the companies, and it's low bid, I understand how government works, but it was really nice to see a company from Oakdale be awarded a contract because they were the low bid.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Alright, bring it back to council.
Motion to approve 11.3.
I second that motion.
First and a second, roll call please, Colleen. Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios?
Yes, this item passes 4-0, thank you, Colleen. Alright, next item, 11.4.
Mayor Barrios, members of the City Council. I have the least, uh, exciting item tonight.
Oh, come on!
Uh, the subject is, uh, to consider a resolution for adopting, or being adopted for the 25, 2025 Oakdale Construction Improvement Standards Update. So, the city of Oakdale maintains formal construction standards that guide the design and construction of public infrastructure associated with, and both, with, uh, both public and private. Uh, these standards are known, uh, as the Oakdale Improvement Standards and are periodically updated to reflect changes in technology, uh, policy and best practices. Uh, the standards address, but are not limited to streets, sewer, water, storm drainage, lighting, and fire-related facilities and other matters that, um, fire has input on on new construction. So, why have them? Well, it's to provide clarity and consistency to contractors and developers and city staff to, uh, ensure that all public improvements are constructed in a durable and safe standard, uh, promote fairness by holding all projects to the same requirements, and establish, uh, framework for future updates uh, as construction methods and materials evolve, and reduce, uh, the potential for disputes over product, project requirements. It's always great to fall back on. And I, and I want to add to that, as we, uh, work with builders and even on our own capital projects, they incorporate pages from our standards right into the plans, so they appear, they'll eventually appear, appear in the plans themselves. So, the key updates this time around are LED lighting. Um, that's been kind of a, it's been dancing around for a little while. We do have a, a good standard to fall back on now. Uh, along with that, uh, it's always a challenge to make sure that we have the right poles and, uh, light caps, which is the top head of the, of the decorative lighting. Um, as manufacturers, and especially lately, I would say within the last five years, I think we've had three different manufacturers producing the same light standard that we use in the city of Oakdale. One falls off, the other one picks up that, that, uh, form or casting, and then they move forward with the same. So, so we're constantly, at least in our own minds, we're, we're updating our standards as time goes on and as manufacturers change with our lighting. Uh, fire-related services, Modesto Fire never got an opportunity to review the, the standards, so now they, they have had that opportunity and they have their input. And then updates to water service. As laws change, um, there are certain requirements that change as well that are incorporated in our water system, mostly having to do with protecting our, our water system. Uh, these are a couple of pages that are out of the standards. Um, these are the details. There's the light standard on the left and, uh, fire hydrant on the right. And then, uh, fire, uh, they always have input on, uh, street radiuses, uh, widths, uh, mostly to have, provide access for their, their fire apparatus. And then on the right, right-hand side, is a page out of the standards as well. And the, the standards are loaded with, um, supportive documentation regarding, uh, some of the items that are in the details, such as the fire-related issues or items. There's no fiscal impact. Uh, this is something that we'll, we'll produce and we'll get out into, um, people that are interested in doing development, and, uh, we'll be sharing with, uh, future CIP, uh, will be incorporated into future CIP designs, and, uh, we'll also put it on our website. So, staff is recommending that City Council adopt a resolution approving the 2025 Oakdale Construction Improvement Standards Update.
Any questions from Mr. Gravel?
Is this an annual thing that you'll be updating? Or is this a when-needed thing?
When needed. There's no requirement to update it on certain intervals, so we just, as we see any-
And for those interested, the entire, uh, uh, packet is included in our-
Yes.
Agenda tonight, so if everybody wants to know what's in this thing, it's right here in the packet.
Alright, anything else? Comments from the public? Alright, thank you, Jeff. It's an action item.
Motion to approve 11.4.
I'll second that.
First and a second, roll call please. Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios? Yes, this item passes 4-0, thank you. Alright, city manager's report, anything to add, city manager?
Nothing to add other than what's in the report.
Okay. Alright, any city council member have an item they would like to discuss?
I have a couple of things here. Uh, city manager, Mark, can you, uh, give us a highlight of a memo that you sent out regarding city growth?
So, I felt it was necessary, being as there was some misinformation on, on, um, social media pages about, uh, the annexation of the Sierra Point specific plan, so I, uh, wrote a letter explaining, um, some difficulties or some challenges that we could possibly have if the annexation fails. So, uh, currently, it's at LAFCO and there's a protest vote. If they get enough protest votes, then it, uh, then it will fail. But essentially, what I want to do is caution the City Council that if it does fail, um, one of the much-needed intersections, one of the most complained about intersections in our city, which is Stearns and 120, will not be realigned. It'll be postponed indefinitely. Caltrans has asked the city of Oakdale to do the design plans because, um, if, if we asked Caltrans to do it, they're approximately 10 years behind. So, essentially, what Mr. Gravel has done is he's authored a grant that will pay for the design plans, and then after the annexation is complete, it'll be incumbent on the, uh, developer. That'll be in state, that'll be in phase one, which would significantly improve the traffic pattern on that side of town. It would reduce the number of cars, uh, on, um, on Stearns, uh, how, how Stearns is offset. So, this is something that, in my opinion, Oakdale needs greatly. It, it'll significantly improve our traffic over there. This will stall out. Um, because first, there's no funding. Caltrans can't design it for at least 10 years, and then finding funding for it, um, is pretty much feasibly impossible. Additionally, uh, without, without the sustained growth, it's my opinion that without a long-term, uh, plan for fiscal, uh, stability, um, it's going to be difficult to continue with the services that the city of Oakdale has. In other words, if, if we don't continue to grow as a community, our fiscal and financial, um, status will probably decline. A city that's not growing is one that's going to become stagnant, which means that it's going to be, uh, difficult to pay our bills. It's going to be difficult to pay our, uh, staff livable wages. We're not going to be able to compete with, um, local municipalities and our qualified, highly qualified staff would essentially leave for a higher-paying job in a city that can actually afford them. Additionally, um, when retailers are looking at, when retailers are looking for places for them to in, increase their revenues, they, they're going to look at cities that actually want to grow. And by sending retailers a message that Oakdale doesn't want to grow, like we've done in the past, it's going to stall out retailers. Um, right now, I want to send the message to the retailers. Oakdale does want to grow. We want your business. I think there's a lot of interest in Oakdale. Uh, I want to encourage them that we are here to do business. We are one of the business, when, you, you've seen it. When businesses come in and they want to work with city staff, they are always so complimentary about how willing we are to help them get through their projects so they can get their projects done as quickly as we can. We're one of the easiest cities to work with. If we send a message that we're not, they're not going to be interested in coming. So, those are just some of the reasons, um, that I caution about, uh, protesting on this annexation. I know there's some misinformation about, uh, the folks out there, um, losing their ability to have the animals. None of that changes when you become, uh, part of the city of Oakdale. The, the thing that changes are going to be your, your police and your fire services. Police, the Oakdale Police would take over servicing that area of town with no change. As soon as it's annexed, it becomes our responsibility. So, they receive our police services, they receive Modesto Fire Services, which in my opinion are significantly better than what they're receiving now. Additionally, in the plan, they're, they'll receive curb veteran sidewalks at no cost to them, uh, which improves their property value. And then, if I understand correctly from our last conversations, they'll have the option of joining us on water and sewer, um, which could save them significant monies in, if they, for some reason, had a well failure or a septic system failure, um, that, that would fall on the city to get it fixed. So, um, I, I think that, that what Oakdale has to offer for services is far superior to what they're receiving right now in all facets of, um, the infrastructure, uh, traffic, um, safety services.
Well, I want to thank you for bringing that up, because like you said, there's a lot of misinformation going around, I'll say specifically in social media, so it's nice that you gave that, this little report, and thank you, um, for your letter here. This has been in the makes for, how many years? 20-plus years? I don't know.
Since 2013.
So, 2013. And, uh, and now it's in the spot in Modesto, Stanislas County. And when's the last protest date? What, did it already happen?
September 18th.
The 18th.
So, September 8th, so Thursday. So, once that's done, if the people that live in that footprint, they don't protest it, it's done to deal? It's-
That's correct.
Because I've heard city council can change it, and what we've talked about, that is not a true statement. No matter what's on social media, that is not a true statement.
City council has already voted for it and approved it. Then it goes to LAFCO. LAFCO voted on it, and now it's in the protest period.
So, the cit, the people that live around there in that footprint are the only ones that could protest it?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright. Anything else?
Couple of things. Number one, we were given a, a wage comp comparison, um, and, yeah, if we become stagnant-
Please, please don't mention the city that I compared to.
I will not. The, if we become stagnant, these wages will drop. We won't be able to afford, uh, our services.
Our wages will become stagnant. Every other agency surrounding us will continue to increase, if, if they continue to grow their city. And I'm not saying we're going to grow at an exponential rate. I'm saying we could have a managed, uh, managed growth rate of 1% to 2%, like we've had over the last few years. And there's a reason why we have 40% general fund. It's because we manage our growth properly and we managed our budget properly. And that's my vision, is to continue on that path that Brian White Meyer set us on.
And as Brian White Meyer pointed out during our, uh, conference in regard to this, our, our meeting, just because it's annexed this year, it could be 10 more years. It could be 15 to 20 before the first shovel is overturned.
Keep in, keep in mind-
Like Vineyard, Mitchell Hill, Bridle Ridge?
Yes.
Exactly. Keep in mind, one of the first stages that has to happen is the intersection of Stearns and 120 so that it could support any building in that area. That's stage one, and there's no design for that. And I anticipate the design for that to take, what, approximately a year?
Probably a year. Who's to say how long it's going to take in review by Caltrans?
Right. So, we're looking at-
And then it has to be reviewed, and then it has to be built, so-
Long-term future.
Right, so we're looking just even a couple of years before we get the intersection.
And the other thing is-
Without that intersection, uh, Oakdale, that, that traffic on that side of town is just going to stay the way it is. People use it as a pass-through. There's numerous houses on Stearns that are disrupted daily by the traffic that's going, that's going up there and trying to get around the traffic in town.
And the other thing is, we all know, um, as far as retail goes, the word that keeps coming up, uh, not enough rooftops. Not enough rooftops. Not enough rooftops for Target. Not enough rooftops for this.[1743.62] Not enough rooftops for Target, not enough rooftops for this, not enough rooftops. And if we-
And, okay, I just wanna explain, this isn't a doomsday letter. This is just a letter notifying city council that this, long-term, if we don't have a long-term strategy to continue growth with the city, th, that's when we need to start getting concerned. So, if I don't have a long-term, uh, plan on how to get our people paid, it's gonna make it difficult for me to tell them to stick around.
Just the facts. You should have a page on social media that says just the facts.
This is full of facts. This is a factual letter.
Yep. Well-
Thank you for that.
Feel free to post it.
What did you say?
Feel free to post it.
Thank you.
And just real quick, one thing that I saw in working for a, um, I don't know the right word to say, not the most wealthy county for 30 years of my career when I worked for Merced County, um, seeing people leave for higher-paying jobs, um, especially in law enforcement, um, and also with city staff, and seeing people come in, very well-qualified people that are benefit to their organization, and then they're gonna leave to make more money. I get it. Um, I think some of us are the old dinosaurs that they stayed for 30 years because of loyalty, and that's what I did throughout my career. Um, first job out of college and retired as chief. That doesn't happen as much anymore. People are looking at money, people are looking at bettering their families. I have a son looking at going to law enforcement, and he's looking at salaries. And he's looking at Trulock, he's looking at Modesto, he's looking at Oakdale, he's looking at places in Reno where he lives, and he's looking at salaries, and that's what they see. And I wanna be able, as a city of Oakdale, be able to compete. Um, we may not be able to be equal with a city the size of Modesto, but I think we can compete because of our leadership. Um, and if you can make it close, leadership makes a huge difference in being able to hire and retain good staff, and so, we already have the leadership. Um, and I think being able to keep salaries similar is going to be able to retain employees, and that's the biggest thing I took out of that letter. Obviously, because of my career, that's what I focus my mind sets on, um, is how is it gonna impact law enforcement? And, uh, and those are things that I think could be detrimental to the city if we do not grow, at least in a reasonable way.
Let me just add one more thing. Any new subdivision that comes into town, they pay for their, their, their tax for their police and fire services, so it's, these new subdivisions are not going to be a burden on the general fund, because they, they pay proportionally their, their share of police and fire.
Thank you.
So, it helps us increase our staff, it helps us pay them a fair wage.
Thank you. Any other comments from city council?
I do. I have one more thing. There's a guy sitting in the audience right now, all quiet, pretending like he's not paying attention, but it's Patrick Mondragon, and every month or so, he puts out a 90-day outlook, and they're super helpful. He posts them online, he spreads them around social media, he prints them out for us, and I asked him to print out an extra stack in the, uh, entry area there, so hopefully it did. Um, I just wanna say thank you. These are absolutely helpful, important for me, uh, people like me who have a hundred things on their calendar already, and we can go check them off. So, thank you for doing this, uh, how, as often as you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Patrick.